I'm Ronnie Cowan, Chairman Baines is not here tonight, and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Thank y'all for coming, we appreciate everybody's interest in county government. Thought for the day is learn from yesterday, live for today, hope for tomorrow, Albert Einstein. So, let's go invocation, let's see, Ms. Sanders, will you start our invocation?
Let's bow our heads. Father, God, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for this opportunity for us to be here to serve you, God, and allow us to serve your people. Lord, let us lead with transparency. Lord, let us lead with the guidance that you give us, God. Let us lead with empathy and sympathy so that we see your people in the name of Jesus, that we pray, amen.
Commissioner Edwards, will you do the pledge? Thank y'all. Okay. Now I have the agenda in front of you. I have one change to make to the consent agenda, and that is a request from Newton County Sheriff's Department to apply for the Georgia Gang Activity Grant. We'd like to add that on there, so they can go ahead and get that done. So, do I have a motion to change that?
Add it to...
Or add that to the agenda?
Add it to consent agenda?
Add it to the consent agenda.
Item G.
Item G, yeah. Okay, I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Second, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay, citizen comments for agenda items only. Any citizen comments? Okay, no citizen comments for agenda items only. Chairman's report, I have no idea what I would say on that, since I have been out with knee surgery. So, other than the fact that my knee still hurts, but I am walking. County Manager's Report, Mr. Harold Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, board members, citizens and employees. I come before you today with the County Manager's Report. Again, our work is predicated on the three P approach, people, purpose and processes, but today we're going to examine our why. Let's talk about the people, and we're going to talk about every person in this room today. We're going to talk about the elected officials. We're going to talk about county employees, and we're going to talk about the residents, also known as the citizens. Elected officials, I want to commend everyone at this horseshoe who's taken on the role as an elected official, because it takes courage to jump out there on faith and say, hey, I'm going to represent a community. So, when you run for an office, it's an individual sport, because regardless of what type of support you have, you're doing it, and it's you on that island by yourself. However, when you become an elected official, the art of governing is a team sport. And once you refrain from adversarial behavior and embark on the spirit of consensus building in an effort to work in unity, solidarity and togetherness, because working together works. County employees, an individual who works in a workforce for a county department, agency or office is classified as a county employee. And as county employees, we provide labor and services to our most important resource, the Newton County community. Residents, also known as citizens, they make up the citizens of the various cities and towns that comprise Newton County. There are people who have the most vested interests in the community. Elected officials and county employees serve the citizens. And what's really gratifying in this role is that eighty-seven percent of our employees are residents of Newton County, so they have skin in the game. So, when we talk about people, I think of the people piece as us. And that us is all-inclusive. No one entity is bigger than the other. No big man, little you, or vice versa. Let's transition to purpose. Optimum service delivery is the cornerstone to our second P. We recently had a town hall, the Nelson Heights Community Center, on September twenty-sixth, and I appreciate all of you, some of you who are in attendance tonight attended that meeting. And we asked three fundamental questions of the participants, and those three questions were, how would the community be willing to partner with the center? What program would you like to see at the center? And what would you like to see happen regarding operations at the center? Forty-four percent of the participants stated that they would like to volunteer in some way, shape or form, whether that's being a tutor, whether that's being a mentor, whether that's being a coach. Thirty-three percent of the participants stated that they would like to see the rebranding of the center focused on youth enrichment. And twenty-eight percent of the participants stated they would like the center to be operated as a community-run space. As a result of hearing what citizens wanted and stated, we're working in collaboration right now with Resilient Women of Newton County, and we're going to embark on a fall festival on October twenty-eighth from the hours of four to six P M. at the Nelson Heights Community Center. Their campaign is geared to stopping the violence, and we're going to work in collaboration with them. There's going to be a trunk or treat element to it, and the kids are going to be able to have fun and participate. On that same day, earlier, I might add, we're going to have Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, the Newton County Domestic Violence Task Force, where men are going to literally walk a mile in our ladies' shoes in an effort to prevent and honor the victims of domestic violence. Let's talk about processes. If I recall correctly, during the last meeting, there were some questions raised about the historic courthouse access. There were some questions raised about the twenty-fifty water plan, and there were some questions raised about impact fees. The courthouse access, the handicap entrance is located at the lower rear door. Instructional sign is located at that entrance. To enter, there's a push button to activate a deputy's response, as well as a camera the deputy can view to determine who needs access. I'm going to follow up with the lieutenant and ensure that, you know, we can make sure that these processes are flowing. I know there was a question about the twenty-fifty water plan, and the plan was developed by our Water Resource Committee. Our Water Resource Director is at the back of the room, James Brown, and I know he'll keep me honest with this, but the population of Newton County is anticipated to be nearly double by twenty-fifty to one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand people. Through the planning process, each city and the county provide an input by sharing visions, future land use plans, and/or comprehensive plans for longer-term growth and development. Now, in actuality, this plan is outdated, because we didn't take into consideration that Rivian was coming to the area, as well as Facebook, Meta. And as a result of that, this Water Resource Committee is working on the twenty-seventy-five plan, because with those two entities alone, we're looking at over maybe seven million gallons of water a day added that was not taken into consideration with this current plan here, the twenty-fifty plan. There was a question raised about impact fees and the allocation of them amongst districts. Well, they're not allocated or appropriated amongst districts. They're allocated and appropriated amongst projects and county-wide projects. So, the current allocations are to the buildings and the libraries, recreation parks and rec, roads and bridges, administration, and also capital improvement elements. I want to talk about and give some flowers to some departments. Our Public Works Department worked diligently, and some of their accomplishments are as written here. Paving projects funded by the twenty-twenty-three Sploes, Davis-Fort Road, High Tower Trail, Macedonia Road, Newton Factory Bridge Road. The paving crew also paved overcross drain pipes that were replaced on River Cove Road, Lower River Road and Lloyd Road. The drainage crew replaced another pipe on Lower River Road as well. Our Finance Department just recently received the Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. And this is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. So, this department is kind of often maligned, but kudos to Ms. Brittany White and her team for doing a magnificent job. Their boutique outfit that does big and bold things with limited resources. Finally, service over self. The rent we pay to live on this earth is a service that we provide to others. I'm not in this work for credit. The only credit I'm worried about is my credit score. If you do the work, the accolades will come. And if we understand that the work that we're doing here as elected officials, county employees, and just concerned citizens, you know, who will keep us accountable, we will reap the reward. And the reward will be a better community. The reward will be a community of unity. And we need that, because we walk around with the one community, one Newton tagline, but we have to live it as well. This concludes my report. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next item on the agenda is old business, and there's none reported. We have the consent agenda. I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, I had a...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hey, man, I'm telling you, glad to see you back. I was worried. And we had been, you know, we had been praying for your recovery. And the little update, I'm sorry, the little update that I had was from Ms. Jackie, and I didn't want to call you and worry too much, but I'm glad to see you back, Commissioner.
Okay.
I just had a question, if I could, Mr. Cooper. It was about the, I think, we were talking about the future water plan of twenty-fifty. I think you had mentioned it in your, in your report. I had asked, and I think I asked a few months ago, and you may have made reference to that when you were talking, but I asked for the paperwork, because the one that I had was to twenty-thirty, and it said that in twenty-thirty we would be at capacity. And I had sent in a open record request as far as asking to see it. And what I got, I think, my friend sent to Ms. Jackie, and she told, said, he said that the consultant had not prepared it yet, and so I was looking for that, so I could look at it. Because if, if we need to know, I mean, we need to know, is that, is we going to be at capacity by twenty-thirty? Because if we are, then we got a whole lot of work to do in a short period, a short period of time. Now, there was a backup plan that everybody knocked down. That was Bear Creek, former commissioners, and I was, unfortunately, was a part of that group. And that was Bear Creek, because we had sit down and hold, as the, as the, as the holders commissioners, and said that we want to do something for the future, and that was Bear Creek. And this still is what we need to do, I think, in the future for water. And one of the things that made me think a little bit bad about it was if we didn't do Bear Creek, that if we were going to get capacity, maybe by twenty-fifty, it was the fact that you had to use wastewater in order to pipe back into the system and then reclaim it. And the very first thing that I thought about was chemicals that was in that particular water. And I think someone said it was forever chemicals and a whole lot of stuff. But make a long story short, I would like to see the paperwork and see exactly where we are at. And I understand that, you know, we are on the same page, we going, but I think there should be a paper trail as far as concerning our water. Nextly, next, you know, I'm wishing the best for Nelson Heights Community Center, and I raise my hand up, anybody who want to take it and run with it, but I don't think there's going to be nobody in the future is going to be running that place better than my son and myself for the community, for Newton County. And that's what we believe. Rebrand it, but it will always be Nelson Heights. And so, but lastly, I hope the chairman gets a little bit better. I feel better. I heard he had hurt his back. I'm sorry I'm a little late. Hurt his back, and I hope he, I hope he gets well, get better. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders, you have a second?
Thank you so much for the detail of the impact fees and explaining where the actual impact fees are going, but just understand that there's districts that don't have any of those items, and those districts, specifically District Three, produce majority of the impact fees from their properties. That's where the density is. That's where the majority of the homes are in District Three. So, if those residents don't see the funding going back to the district that produced majority of the impact fees, that's why they have an issue. District Three does not have a library. District Three does not have parks or rec. Of course, roads are going to be done. That's just, that's just standard. But they don't have a lot of these things that's listed on there, so that's why the residents in that district feel like there's a lax, and they're being missed, because they're producing the funding, but nothing is coming back in return.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Harold? Okay. All right, let's go to the consent agenda. Did I get a motion to accept the consent agenda with the changes that we voted in? Have a motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, okay. All right. All right, let's see. Where are we at here? Yeah. Okay. Ms. Hamp, you want to start?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, we have the items for discussion and consideration this evening. Our first presenter is Ms. Wendy Patterson. Our EMA team, Emergency Medical Assistance, our Renewal of Educational Broadband Service Agreement with Paladin and Wireless. It is time-sensitive, no cost to Newton County, and provides a broadband connection for citizens of Newton in rural communities to have internet access. It is on page sixty-four.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted just to give a little bit of history. In two thousand eighteen, Newton County began discussing with Paladin Wireless the possibility of using the county's educational wireless bandwidth for the rural areas in the county to have internet access. This lease agreement allowed Paladin to use wireless spectrum for Newton County and to use this, because Newton County holds a federal communications commission license. This agreement was brought before the board, approved and signed on March nineteenth of two thousand nineteen. The lease calls for a routine reapproval of the lease by the FCC, which is what Paladin is seeking to do to finish this process. Approval of this request tonight, that is before you, will facilitate that reapproval and allow Paladin to continue serving the customers in Newton County that it is currently servicing. As listed in the agenda request, there is no cost to the county for this renewal process. Does anyone have any specific questions?
Have you looked at that? Are you okay with it? Okay. All right. The contract renewal has been reviewed by the county attorney. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, second. All in favor? What's that? Yep, you want some discussion? Okay. Hey, I'm new at this, okay? All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number eleven. Our presenter is Mr. James Brown, the Director of Cornish Creek Water Treatment Facility. He is requesting approval of Reeves Young LLC Contract Progressive Design Build Services, again, for the Cornish Creek Water Treatment Facility improvements to thirty-nine point five MGD. The cost is five million, three hundred thousand drinking water projects to support the Increased Population Grant, and it is located on page sixty-five through sixty-eight.
Good evening. We're requesting that Reeves Young be, was selected firm to do the construction to the Cornish Creek facility to increase the capacity thirty-nine, thirty-nine point five in an amount of not to exceed five point three million dollars, with one point five being pilot study that is required by the state.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Reeves Young LLC contract? Have you looked at that, Patrick?
We have reviewed that extensively.
Okay. So, it's been reviewed. Do I have a motion to accept the Progressive Design Build Services contract?
Still move.
Have a motion, have a second, second. Motion, second. You have a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A question that I have is a little bit about, I think, a part of the comment. Who will I be to get the paperwork for the twenty-fifty plan? I think I had asked for it a while back, maybe two, two, three months ago. And so, who am I to get a copy of that?
The twenty-fifty plan was provided to Ms. Jackie. The twenty-seventy-five plan is the one that we're currently working on, and it's not ready for release. It's still in draft form that's getting response from DCA.
Okay, so, so if I'm not understanding, I'm trying to hit myself on the stances since you're here. So, we're going to, so we good until twenty-fifty?
Correct.
According to the plan that you supplied to Ms. Jackie?
With the plan that's provided in the twenty-fifty plan, we have to revamp the current plan to twenty-seventy-five, but currently we have enough water with today's usage to twenty forty-seven.
To twenty twenty-seven, okay.
Twenty forty-seven.
Okay, forty-seven. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, James. I couldn't tell. What year was that?
Twenty forty-seven.
Twenty forty-seven.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, so I get that copy of that particular plan, I get the broken-down version of the two. So, Ms. Jackie, could you supply that for me tomorrow, please, ma'am?
All right. Okay, I have a motion, second, on the floor. All in favor? Passes five oh. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our regular meeting. Citizen comments. And we limit those to, what, three minutes?
Yes.
Is that what it is, three minutes?
Yes.
Citizen comments. Any citizen like to come up and make a comment?
Good afternoon, Archer Shepherd, nine-one-six-nine Village Drive. Mr. County Manager, I think you need to get these elected officials a lesson on what you were speaking about tonight, because they sure don't realize what they doing up here. They not concerned about what the citizen put them in office of. The other thing is, the other day they had a thing on Channel Five about the issue down at the scuba store, and they had a clip on that from there. And they had a clip on that from the Chairman of the Board. He said that they would do a investigation. And I told the reporter down there, if they're gonna do an investigation on the store, they need to start up here. Because the same thing that they getting him about is doing business with the county. And a couple of months ago, it was brought to the Board that the Chairman had trucks operating at the county. And the Attorney was asked to investigate that, so nothing happened. We were told that as long as you providing a service, you were entitled to get paid. So I wanna know who is gonna do the investigating because if you're gonna start doing the investigating, you need to start right up here, right over there, where the Chairman was doing business with the county. Didn't have no kind of, I don't know whether he bid, he did a bid or whatnot. So I wanna know who's gonna do the investigating. Also, there's so much stuff going on up here. This way, the investigation should start right in here. Because everybody seemed like they are, not everybody, it's a couple of people. I don't wanna go into that, it's just a couple of people doing, running the county anyway. They not concerned about it, anybody, anything that you want, you don't get nothing. You don't consider the citizen that put you in at all. But also, something else was brought up about, the other day, I saw a clip about a statement that I made about the PPO money. It went on to Commissioner Mason, the Chairman and his wife also received some of that money. So, just to let the citizen know what's going on, it's a whole lots of corruption going on up here. And hopefully, someone could come down here and investigate what's going on up here because it's a whole lots of stuff. And I'm sure in the next month or two, it's gonna be a whole lots of stuff going down because it's too much corruption going on here in Newton County, and people are fed up with it, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Perry. I live in Covetton, Georgia, and I have been a resident here all my life. I actually have a few questions to ask you. The Auburn money, I came when they first started doing, giving application. That was like June first or sometime in there. So I got my contractors to come out, and then I gave everything that they asked. But every time I get close to thinking that they're gonna close, then they ask for pictures or either revamp the contractors and all. And it wasn't that much that I asked for. And with me being disabled, I would not have put nothing on there that I really didn't need. So they're telling us that things that we can't have, and I have not gone to thirty thousand dollars, nowhere near. And I just want some answers from the commissioners. And I called and called and called, never get no answer. So I got, and I called the manager of office and left messages, I didn't get an answer. So I'm just concerned, and I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and thank God that I'm still here. And I know Stan Edward, he and I have worked on a board together, and we never had complication, we work together and we work it smoothly. So I'm just wanting some answers, how many times that you have to send pictures in, how many times that you have to revamp your application? And I mean from, it's been over three months. And I asked several contractors that I have, that they said they've been in business thirty years. You can go to their website and see where they are very capable of making decisions that you need to get the work done. So they say they never seen anything like it because I've had a grant before. They never asked me all these things that they are asking us to do. So can anybody up there tell me why do we need so much? And who in charge? Because I think if you need that much information constantly from the person, they oughta hire somebody to come to their houses to see what kind of condition they begin and what they need. I wouldn't lie about something I need because I'm not that kind of person. And I have been volunteering in Covetton ever since I was grown and out of high school and gave free time. And I thought that they said this was the Auburn money that we are supposed to get for senior citizens. And believe me, it is hard, and somebody tell me something.
Ma'am, at the conclusion of this meeting, I'm gonna come directly to you and talk with you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Perry.
So the Reed, uh, one zero one zero nine Village Drive Northwest. And, you know, I was thinking about the Nelson Heights thing, you know, and that's where I grew up at. And, you know, I didn't really hear anybody say they was gonna open it back up? Or is it closed for good? Or, you know, I hear y'all doing?
Oh, it's gonna be reopen.
It's gonna be reopen? Okay, okay, that's good. And the thing about, you know, we were talking about, I think for me, that it's about action. You know, it ain't about us just talking about, we have to take action, do what we need to do. And that's where service come in at, because it's hard to do service, you know, when you, when you, when you in need, when you're hungry, you know, when you need your bills to be paid and stuff, you know? So it's, it's, so, you know, you know, corruption, you know, is, you know, it's like if I point a finger at you, I got to be pointing at me. So, you know, I need to live right and do the right thing in situations. So, you know, I mean, I expect other people to do that, you know what I mean? But sometimes, I don't see it like that, but, you know, that's the way it is. But if, you know, and I rode around Covetton today, you know, and I hear a lot of things people saying that are true, you know, about Covetton, Georgia, where things are being located, you know, pollution and stuff, you know? And in the neighborhood I live in, I was riding around today, and I was running around the outskirts of it. And there's a lot of polluted stuff going on around there with businesses and stuff, you know? But, so, you know, the service, when we talk about the service, you know, that's, that's an important word that, that we have to take serious, you know? Because if I'm selfish, you know, I can't be no service to nobody, I'm all about myself, you know? So, so the service is an important thing for us, you know? So, so I'm glad we opened the Nelson Heights Community Center back up. But, you know, I think we can do more, man, I think we all can step up to do more, you know, for this community because there's a lot of things going on in this community that are, that are not good, you know? And I think we can all do more to step up, you know? And the only way we can do that is to get outside ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Williams, resident of Newton County. County Clerk, Ms. Jackie Smith, I did an open record request about five days ago, and I haven't got a response. I also put the County Attorney on it. My question was, I want to know, did Harry Cooper disclose to Newton County about this pending litigation in Henry County when he came aboard to take this job and during the interview process? I have a real concern about that because we have a lot of females that are the apartment heads in Newton County. And not only that, we have a lot of females that work in Newton County. And so, we already have had a lot of litigations, a lot of lawsuits, and we struggling trying to get insurance, so that's an issue and major concern for me. And second of all, I wanna talk about the homeless shelter. The homeless shelter, I wanna know, is this board aware that the people and their children are being put out in the middle of the night, at eleven o'clock at night, cold rain and storming, people don't have anywhere to go? One female was put out over there last Saturday. She had three kids and herself. Thank God that the young lady had a car because she had to sleep in her car, still sleeping in her car with her children at racetrack. So I want this, this board to be mindful when people coming up here asking for money for the homeless shelter and the women's shelter, make sure that they are doing the work because you're not, you're not gonna always have the same type of people that come to the shelter, they're gonna be afraid to speak up and afraid to talk. And at the same time, they should not be penalized and put out on the spur of the moment because they see something wrong and they speak up about it. If you gonna run something and you gonna run it with your feeling on your sleeve, you're not the right person. You got a lot of these women that's over there, they've been in abusive relationship, they running. The only thing they got is the clothes on their back and the clothes on their children's back. And you have people over there that have been on drugs. So you can do one thing to trigger those people to take them back to where they've been fighting hard to come from. So this board need to be real considerate of that, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Under Threat Nation News. I am the examiner report, my name is Terry Jackson, I'm an activist. I watch my government, and what is my government doing? I'm concerned about the Auburn fund money. How long has it been shut down? People out here waiting with repairs on their home? They're not hearing anything from you guys. When last time you did an audit on Ms. Kimberly to find out exactly what she's getting paid? So I wish you guys to step up. People are here waiting. I'm a US military veteran, activist, retired man. So what else I got to do besides watch my government, watch my tax dollars being spent? I'm not sure how much money you guys spending tonight, but I'm concerned about that Auburn fund money. You guys is not putting that money out here. What you waiting on, I don't know. Maybe once a month, you could do an audit on this money. Once a month, tell the people where this money is going, what it's doing. We ain't heard nothing from you guys. I appreciate you guys for your attention, but please look into this for us, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alfonso Henry Henley. I reside at fifty-five Riverbrook Trail. I haven't been a resident of Newton County very long, two years, to be exact. Last week, for the first time, I took a, took an extensive drive around Newton County. What I observed, I was not happy with because it was a week of children being out of school all week. But what I saw was children with nothing to do because every community center that I drove by expecting to see children in activity, there was none, they were all closed. Now, as a young man, me, I'm now sixty-two years old. As a young man, I grew up in a very impoverished neighborhood. It had several community centers and recreation centers. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that those community centers were open because the children need something to do. When the children don't have anything to do, they end up in our jails. And I know our jails is a major source of revenue. CCA is proof of that. Fifty-four percent of our congressmen are invested in CCA. So we know that our, our children are going to eventually end up there if we don't give them something else to do. Now, what we need to do as citizens of Newton County is take care of our future. Right now, we're paying a lot of money out right now for things to happen right now. But who's gonna take those positions when our childrens grow up? Who's gonna sit up there? Idiots with guns in their hands? Or is it going to be intellectuals who are going to guide this county in the right direction? Right now, I see land that is just atrocious. Golf courses that are overcrowded with grass, clothes, that can be recreational areas for junior achievers. But we don't expect junior achievers here, I guess, because we, you know, I'm not sure what's going on. That's about all I have to say, but I'd like to see something, because I would like to have activities myself. Because I've been all over the world, I have a lot of experience. I'd like to talk to the kids because, you know, they are what's going to count later on. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Is, is any other citizen comment? Okay, thank y'all for that information. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Edwards? Okay. Commissioner Mason? Wow. Well, I will say, thank y'all, the ones that have prayed for me because of my knee surgery, I appreciate that very much. And I wanna say to the citizens, I'm listening to what you're saying, I'm concerned about that Auburn money too. Not, it's not working out well. When that first came out, I said, don't take it because when you start fooling with the federal government, it gets to be a mess. But we took it, and, but we were not, it's not working like I thought it would either. So I understand your concerns about that. I also understand the concerns about activities for children. I've been concerned about that too. Anyway. Thank y'all for coming tonight, thank you for your input. Commissioner Sanders?
Just to echo a little bit what the resident stated, also my fellow colleague, I am also concerned about our youth. That's been my scream ever since I've been in office, has been talking about our youth in parks and recs and programs. So I'm not gonna go too much in that, but as we can see, it's a problem with our residents as well, so we need to do better. I just recently attended the ACCG Legislative Conference in Jekyll Island, had the opportunity to represent Newton as one of the voters for, to select our top three priorities for our legislators to look at when it's time for the session to go in place. Just to let you all know that the top three priorities that the commissioners and those who actually were appointed to vote in that election, I would say, well, wouldn't be election, but to vote for that, those priorities. Number one was mental health and behavior health is one of the main, number one priority, property tax assessment and appeal reform. And number three is emergency medical services. So those are the top three priorities that our lobbyist, ACCG, will, will bring to our legislators on a state level to push forward, to make sure they go through for our counties. So I'm thankful for that. Also, I had the opportunity to receive my UGA Leadership Development Certification through ACCG, and I'm honored for that. You had to do about forty-eight hours of coursework, so I received that. And I have another one that's coming up really soon, I'm two classes away. So I'm trying to move forward and get those certifications out of the way. So I'm thankful for that opportunity and to be able to grow with Newton County. I always say that when you are a elected official, sitting in a seat and being complacent, and I know Commissioner Harrison probably gone to twenty thousand conferences, been in this, been in the seat for so long, you have to do professional development, you have to do growth. Policies change, counties change, people change, your population's gonna look different. If we're constantly doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, we all know what that's called, insanity. So we have to do better with that. I do wanna speak on this one point, and it's really hard to speak about it. I did watch the city council meeting on last night. And it has nothing to do with the person. When you're in this position, you can't think about personal, you have to think about the situation. I had the opportunity to talk to these battered women and those women who... I had the opportunity to talk to these battered women and those women who were experiencing drug addiction in that shelter. I had the opportunity to talk to a twelve-year-old who lives in that shelter, who said to me that they feel like they were a slave in the shelter. This came from the mouth of a twelve-year-old, who said, ma'am, sometimes I feel like I'm a slave. That came from a twelve-year-old. I saw the video of the conditions. I actually went there and donated food from my banquet I had last week, and to hear those residents tell me they didn't even get the food, that's a problem for me. It had, like I said, it hasn't to do with the individual, it has to do with the services. And we here at the county have donated thousands of dollars and utilized ARPA funds for the homeless shelter. And so we have to step outside of ourself on who the person is running it and look and see if people are being served, because we took a sworn oath to protect people. We took a sworn oath, oath, to make sure this county is taken care of, and we took a sworn oath that we would utilize taxpayers' dollars with transparency, effectively, and make sure we're doing the right job. There's a lot of situations that are happening right now in the county, and I know I can't speak on them based on it might be potential litigation, but if there is misappropriation of funds, we need to be stepping up and making sure that the residents know that we care about how their tax dollars are being spent. I'm only gonna speak on truth, transparency. I did not get in this job to be friends with everybody. I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak that. I got in this job to do my job. I got this job to serve people. So if I'm on that island by myself, that's okay, because God gonna bless me for doing the right thing. I have a maker that I have to answer to, and if I'm doing my job, I'm gonna be rewarded at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, if, well, first of all, I just want to just, hey, let's give Commissioner Sanders a hand, because I tell you, she, it's, it's hard work to get certified. So let's give her a, yeah. Next, the next answer, we have a, it's a hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia, and out of all hundred and fifty-nine counties, don't you know, don't you know that, that our, that the plantation that we own is doing better than any community center that we have? It takes in more money than any community center that we have. Any. What did you do over there? Reenactment? Go around, look at this lake waters and, and talk about, haven't heard of, but I believe it, to talk about how they used to treat people back in the day, and that's not right. And things like that is gonna continue to happen to the people of Newton County until we just take a stand. You got to take a stand over something. And I'm gonna close with this, and we heard the story of the little boy in the plantation. You know, some people said, go down there and sit down and, and maybe drink a beer, or you can drink beer down there like in a place in, in the county. The little boy down in the plantation, he just playing with the other kids. No kids play, and, and so the little girl, they wanted to teach the little boy how to read. And so the little boy, he got with him, they brought him, slipped him little books, and the little boy ran to read. But lo and behold, after time went by, maybe a year, two years, the master found out, or the little boy might have read, started reading a book in front of the master. And so for every grade level that the little boy had learned, they cut a finger off. Can you imagine what he could have did, what he did to that little boy? Hey, I'm telling you folks, and people get mad, I mean, that may be the reason I've been audited for four and a half years, and they come back with another, another audit over here with some more crazy man, and trying to say that I stole, and I stand up anywhere, show me where I stole something, and I bet you, you'll be wrong. So they cutting the little boy's fingers off. So I'm telling you, this what they doing to our kids today. They're cutting their fingers off because they depriving them the right to an education. You may not like me, and that's fine, you know? I thought I was more likable person in this county, but don't take it out on our kids. You don't have to be. You lock a gate to a community center that has a playground in it for kids to keep them from playing. Thank you. Let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Okay, that concludes our regular meeting. We have a executive session, and we will be taking a vote.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we need to be taking a vote.
Okay. So we're gonna dismiss for executive session, then we'll-
For real estate.
For real estate, and we will come back up here and dismiss. Do I need a motion that we go into executive session? Motion second. All in favor?